Today is August 26th at 5:32 PM. We have a webinar feature meeting for our board meeting tonight. In attendance are Jamie Saucier, Jen Rantz, and Melissa Lyons, school board members, Mr. Brandon French, principal, Superintendent Designee Esther Asbell, and SAU 16 Executive Director of Finance and Operations Molly Oke. I finally got your title correct. We have two spots for public input, so if you could use the chat function for public input at this time. We have this new webinar style that we're testing out for this meeting to see how this works. We've used this a couple other times for our larger meetings, just to make sure that we're not interrupted through our calls and we can't undo an interruption. So I'm going to go to approval of minutes before we do any public input, just so that they have a time to form some questions. But again, any public out there, please feel free to use the chat function. It should go all to all panelists, is that correct Esther?
Yes.
Okay, so all the panelists, and then I'll read it out loud once we get it. So approval of minutes, public minutes from our July 9th meeting. I have a couple corrections. If you guys have anything, Jen and Melissa? Okay, so I have a couple corrections. Brandon's name is spelled incorrectly in the attendance up there. And then for the public, the listing for Mr. Calandra is, should be Mr. Peter Calandra, C-A-L-A-N-D-R-A. So the spelling of that. Under Section 4B, and I'll send all these in text too, says unknowns with COVID-19, six sentences from the bottom, should be unknowns with COVID-19 or with COVID. On section number seven, old business, board goals three. So to align and balance the community resources. So it said, Mr. Saucier explained what we did during the budget season. I just want to add a little clarification in there in regards to listening to the community and coming under last year's budget. I think that's where my intent was for that for that comment there. And that's it, except for the very last page spelling again under section number nine. Mr. Calandra again spelling there for his name. So I'd also like to make sure that Melissa is listed on there as maybe absent, is that, because you had sent some notes to us, that's why you're mentioned in the, just to make sure that you're listed as absent at the top.
I think that's what it says.
So I make a motion to approve July 9th minutes as amended with those spelling and grammar and then a little part on Section 7.3. Do I have a second for that?
One second.
Okay, any discussion, any further discussion on the minutes? Okay, all in favor, please signify by saying your name, Jamie?
Jen.
And Melissa, you're going to abstain as you are absent. Okay, so now on to the minutes from our meeting on August 12th, or meeting non-meeting. So just a reminder to people that this did not count as an official meeting because the technology cut out on us. But we did use some of the advantage of having a second Zoom session prior to our board meeting the next morning for parent input. So again, these would be a non-meeting minutes, but again, Brandon's name is spelled incorrectly up at the top of attendance. It should be Michelle Larson, not Melissa Larson. I'd like to move Sharon Norman up to staff members and not as public. Spelling again of Mr. Calandra's name. And then remove one Angela Pittman from attendance. And then under Section number two, public input, where Mr. Saucier explained the last paragraph there. Mr. Saucier explained that he thinks that can be up to 40 students, and then this is at the EKES site. And then on the second page where it's in bold, Zoom had a malfunction at 5:45 PM. I'd just like to move that down to underneath principals report to where it ends there. And I think that would be the, that would be the end of the notes that I have for that section there. So I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from our non-meeting on August 12th as amended. Do I have a second?
A second.
Okay, any other discussion on the minutes? Do you guys have any other things? Okay, all in favor, Jamie?
Jen.
Melissa.
Okay, and then for our Thursday, August 13th listening session where we had our work session. I believe that we should call this one our working session, right, our board work session on the 13th? Was that what this one was? Board members?
Yes.
Yeah, this wasn't the listening session, it was a
It was a work session. This was, yeah, the 10 AM one.
So I would like to cross out listening session and make that work session. I'd like to add Melissa Lyons as attendance. I'd like to change Mr. Calandra's spelling again, take out one Angela Pittman. Underneath the thank yous to the teachers who have taken their time during the summer, the team has taken work and created remote for all students, Mr. Grelo, Ms. Norman, Mr. Stevens, Ms. Miller, and Ms. Tewell. Not, it's pronounced Tewell, but it's spelled differently. And then same thing down under four, two, social emotional learning, Ms. Tewell. And then we had a listing of parenting communities input questions that they sent to us and the board asked them questions. So I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from our work session on the 13th as amended. Do I have a second?
A second.
Second, but Melissa, any other discussion? Do you guys have any other edits to these?
Nope.
I had my red pen today. So all in favor, Jamie?
Melissa?
Jen.
And I'll send all those notes, just so they're easy, over to Leanne. So I don't see any public input, so I'll leave it open for one more, one more session. So we're going to go underneath the section number four, SAU 16 office report. So superintendent's report, so under David Ryan's account, Esther Asbell. Do you have anything for the superintendent's report?
No, we've just been all consumed with return to school plans and nothing until the personnel nominations, which you have further down on that section.
Great, thank you for all the hard work you guys are doing. I know it can't be stated enough. Molly, financial reports, anything?
So a little bit of good news. So the last time we met and talked about financials, we were looking at the unreserved fund balance of $37,186. But as we closed out a little bit of, or as we closed out some purchase orders, we saw a little bit less expense and then we saw a little bit more revenue than forecasted. So now we're looking at slightly more at $41,507.28, which was included in your board pack. So very, very similar to what we talked about last time.
And all of that does go back to the town because we did not spend it?
Yeah, I don't think we have any, we don't have any warrant articles, so it would go warrant articles first, but yes, that would get returned to taxpayers.
So we're off, yep.
It's still the projection because we're not quite finalized with everything, but we will be finalizing everything in the next few weeks.
Okay. So that is an offset to the taxes for the upcoming year, when that's figured out.
Right, so that would be, so yes, that would be how much you don't have to raise next year in taxes.
Perfect. Thank you. Other board members, do you have any questions for Molly at the time?
I don't.
Great, thank you. Now, under Section C, personnel nominations.
Sure. So Brandon and Dr. Ryan have obviously met with all three of these individuals and checked references. And so these are the three they're bringing to the board, nominating to the board for approval. The first one is Jessica Buckman, and I sent her resume, I sent all three resumes to board members via email for your reference. She's for the position of the library media specialist. And I don't know, Brandon, if you want to speak to anything regarding Jessica?
Before I do that, are we, are we going into non-public for this, or are we discussing it now?
Oh, good point. Does the board normally go into non-public for nominations?
What have you guys done in the past?
Not typically for nominations unless there was something that we needed to discuss that needed to remain private. If it was just a, you know, straightforward nomination, then no, we wouldn't need to.
Okay, these are the nominations recommendations coming from the superintendent anyways, right?
Yep, and the principal. So I guess the better question is, did the board have any questions that we should go into non-public before I continue?
I don't, I don't have anything yet.
All right, so we'll continue, and if you do have questions, then we'll go into non-public. Sound good?
Sounds good, thank you.
The second nomination, and Brandon helped me with Allison's last name, how you pronounce that. Allison Shibe is for the long-term sub position. And then Shelby Alessandroni, I think Alessandroni, is for the academic tutor for reading and math. So those are the three people we're bringing forth for nominations for those positions. I would ask the board for a motion for approval unless there's a conversation that we need to go into non-public for.
I'll make a motion to approve the slate offered.
A second.
Okay, now, now any discussions right now? Do we need to do non-public for anything? Okay, any other discussion on these three candidates? Thank you so much, Mr. French, for doing your hard work on these. And they're all slated to be able to start the first day of school or before.
Great, I also, I also wanted to just discuss with the board and talk about our kitchen manager and our art positions that we had listed on our, on our application system for the district. At the moment, because we are moving to remote instruction and we're not going to be serving in our mind, not going to be serving
Brandon, hold on, let's finish the motion.
Good.
Yep.
Okay. Anything else for discussion for these three candidates? Thank you, that was, it'll make it clean. So there's a motion and a second. All discussions ended, votes for in favor of these, the slate of candidates, Jamie?
Melissa?
Jen.
Great, thank you guys.
Is there anything else under the SAU 16 office right now, Esther?
Anything else personnel, and I think Brandon, you were sorry to interrupt you, I just wanted to finish the motion. So continue on with your lunch discussion, and I think it was some other position, but I didn't hear it.
Yeah. So now I can go. We also had, we also had two positions posted, one was for the kitchen manager. It was a part-time position, and we also had the art, a long-term sub for maternity leave. And at this moment, we're not going to be filling those positions. For the kitchen manager, it really came down to, you know, the fact that we went remotely. And at this time, working with our food services director, Deplord, we do have a part-time kitchen worker that works in the office and in the kitchen. She will be fulfilling any of our remote breakfast and lunches for our students that need or desire a lunch or a breakfast, so she will be taking that role here, working with Deplord in Kensington. If we do go back to in-person instruction, then we would repost that position and fill it.
Okay.
Regarding the art position, it's been posted since the spring, and as of, as of Friday, we still had not had one certified applicant for the position. And we were trying to be creative on a way to make sure that our students had something every single day as far as unified arts. And as we were talking as a team, we really wanted to, like I said last week, really front-load the social emotional learning for our students. And we really feel like it's a, it's a win-win-win-win-win across the board for, for our plan, which is for Ms. Tewell, our school counselor, to fill in for those art blocks for our students who would normally have art on their specific day. She would be taking the 45-minute block, using the Choose Love curriculum to work with our students on the, on the social emotional piece that we feel that they've been lacking for the last five months. When, when our teacher comes back from maternity leave, then she would slide right back into a weekly art class for our students. I know, I know people may be concerned that there is no art on a weekly basis, but in working with our, in working with our classroom teachers, they know that is, it is going to be, it's going to be their responsibility to, which most of them do anyways, but just to get the, the art standards through, through any of our PBL work or during our academic time, and, and they know that it's going to be something that's going to be part of their week, but it's not necessarily going to be taught by the art teacher.
Great. Jen and Melissa, do you have anything on that? I think it's a very creative solution to save some, some funds. And knowing that our students definitely do need an outlet and social emotional outlet might just be as good as a creative outlet at this time. And I think that's a fairly, I think the parents and the teachers, as long as the teachers are okay with adding on, you know, the, the little arts piece, they do it all the time anyways. They, they express themselves through drawing, all these different. So I'm in support of that, and thank you so much for being creative with that.
You're welcome, thank you.
So that concludes the personnel report.
Okay. Awesome, so I, so I want to jump back up to number two. So announcements, public input, and correspondence. So we got one chat in here. Please let me know the basis for six weeks of socialization of students after the eight-day delay. Why don't we have a board go to the first reading of, quote, the policy decision to go remote and then vote after the second reading? I've seen this protocol many times, it gives us time. So it's not a six-week socialization of students. Students are going to be learning starting 9:14. The eight-day delay, we moved all of the professional development up from the, from, throughout the year and front-loaded that professional development. So it's not a delay, and it's not six weeks of socialization. Regarding the board policies, this was not, this isn't a policy review to go remote. This is a, a from, it's a recommendation from the superintendent's office, and it's not a policy decision. I think we're, we're confused with the policy versus what we have control of, which is the school day start, the, the school schedule. And I think that the board followed everything to a rule, to a role, especially our local board. The boards, the joint board took up the SAU 16 recommendation, and, and each of the boards were tasked with approval of local decisions. So I think that answers that question. Other board members or anyone else want to jump in on that?
I would, I would just add on the six weeks of socialization, I think some of that has gotten a little taken out of context. This is the same thing that would happen in any year. This is kind of getting our kindergartners used to the building, kids meeting new friends, meeting their teachers. In the school system, they designate these first six weeks as kind of that opportunity to build community, you know, for the kids. This doesn't by any means mean that there is not learning occurring, occurring during those first six weeks. It's just that the focus is on routine and establishing community and kids getting to meet their friends and teachers.
And I would just add on the second part of that question, and I'm not sure if I'm understanding it correctly, but agree with what you said, Jamie, about it not being a policy decision. And also, it wasn't something that we voted on the first time we saw it. We saw the plan at the joint board meeting, we saw the plan in writing, so I just want to clarify that. It wasn't that one time, it was multiple times.
Great. Thank you. I also have a couple other communications I want to add to our record. So these were, these came into all three board members, which makes them a public communication. I'm just going to read the names and we'll attach them to the minutes, just so that they're in there. So we had a Dr. Branting email from 10:20, sorry, 8:10 with an attachment. We had a Nancy Parker email from 8:16 with an attachment. A Dr. Branting email from 8:17. A Mike Matallo email from 8:09. And a David McBride email from 8:19. So those were, I have three communications that went to all, those communications went to all board members, and they're now going to be part of the public record and attached to the minutes. Section number five, principals' report.
Before you go, I just wanted to, I just wanted to clarify, did you want me to, to review my 100-day plan again? Or is it something that was left on there by mistake before I begin?
So let me just, can we shut off the chat just until we get back to the, to the bottom? Thank you. So I, I think that because the meeting was non-official, I think we would like to have it again. Just even a brief overview, and we can reference those non-official meeting minutes.
Yep, okay.
Thank you.
Yep, so it was, it was a plan, like I, like I said last, a couple weeks ago, that took many turns, just like or sorry, I returned a school plan. But you're really, either way, if we were in person or if we were, now that we are remotely, I really wanted to focus on three areas. And the first area is really to, to, to build community, to foster those collaborative relationships with all members of East Kingston school and also, also SAU 16. But not only that, I, I really want to focus on all stakeholders in our community and identify the values, beliefs, and, and strengths and perceptions of our building and, and our, our, our community at large. The the reason we want to do this is, is just because of the, of the relationship piece and how important that is for me to get to know our staff and our parents and our community members and our SAU 16 staff. So it was really starting right in July to build those relationships, and it'll, it'll be something that I'll continue, not only for the first 100 days, but as long as I'm the principal of this building. It's such an important piece of who I am, and, and I think I, I really excel in that, and I really want to build upon that. The second area, and this would have been remote for a person, was really focusing on creating a really safe and respectful and healthy atmosphere, either in school or virtually. And we will do this by just continuously conducting walkthroughs of our grounds. Me as, you know, as the administrator of the building, being really invested in, in spending time virtually with our students in their Zoom sessions and their Google classrooms and just being a part of the building any way I can. Because the, the technology safety and, and, and everything that goes along with that is going to be really important with most of our students not being in the building. We're going to be working with our SAU staff on, once we're back in school, if it's in the first 100 days of focusing on our emergency operations plan and working with our SAU staff and, and our emergency management team here in our building. We want to be able to really analyze our academic and our attendance and our discipline data throughout the year and working with our school counselor, Ms. Tewell, to provide the social emotional learning for all of our students. So that was the goal, number two, was really just creating a safe and enjoyable and respectful learning environment. And then our goal number three, excuse me, my goal number three is really just to gain an understanding, not only of, of our building, but of the SAU 16 as a whole. And I'm going to do this by continuously meeting with our administrative team. Esther and I will be meeting twice a month for coaching sessions beginning in September. Working with our senior leadership team, I've had multiple meetings with, with Molly and/or Michelle and Chris and Driscie, looking at grants and looking at our budget. And just continuing to strengthen our relationship with Kensington and our food services. So it was really just looking at the whole SAU and our building and really focusing on those, those strategies and policies and everything else we have to do there.
Great. Thank you for that. Are there any questions at this time from Melissa or Jen? Great. Thank you. So principals' report.
Yes, so as I've stated a million times, I, I, I can't tell you, tell this board or anyone listening enough how amazing my first month and a half have been. It's, it's been crazy, knowing everything we've done, but really, the, the the people I'm working with on a daily basis, starting, you know, starting with our senior leadership team at the SAU office, my building administrator colleagues, but most importantly, the staff here in this building. It's, it's been such a wonderful experience getting to know everyone, and I just want to keep highlighting that, that, that everyone's been working so hard for tomorrow, which is our first staff day, and then looking to work with our students in September. We have finally, as of last Wednesday, had our planner, had a remote plan approved. And that was really about putting our plan into action, and it's going to really start tomorrow with, with our first staff day. And I outlined our PD plan last week, and it's available on our, on our website to take a look at the whole plan. But, but our teachers are going to be leading a lot of our PD. And as I said last week, they are the experts in our fields, and, and it's such an asset to have so many wonderful people leading on their colleagues, and I really think people really take, take more out of it once, once it's someone they know and trust and have that relationship with. Our special education team is continuously reaching out to our parents after the executive order came down a couple weeks ago about in-person instruction, and it's, I think there's just one or two parents that they have not been able to contact yet, but it looks like we will be having students in our building starting in September as we stated with our special education students, and then we'll start working our way from there with our tier two and, and three students. And then I sent out last Friday, I think it was Friday, sent out information. I've had multiple parents reach out wanting to know what our food service is going to look like, so I forwarded that to all of our parents last Friday, and then I met with, with Deplord, our food services director, and Becky, the principal of Kensington on Tuesday, just to fine-tune that, and we'll be serving breakfast and lunch daily, Monday, Wednesday, I'm sorry, Monday, Wednesday, Friday, but there's going to be multiple meals in those deliveries. So we'll be contacting parents. If, if parents reach out to us, we want to make sure that, that we're going to get students food when needed. So if there's any parents out there that, that have questions or anything, please reach out to me and/or Deplord, and we'll get those answers for you. Our enrollment numbers as of Uh, our enrollment numbers as of, as of the board, as of when this was due last week on 8/20/20. Uh, we had 11 kindergarten students, 21 first graders, 21 second grade, 29 third grade, 28 fourth grade and 25 fifth grade. Uh, and then looking at our maintenance facilities. Uh, we voted last, or this board voted last week to approve the ionization. Uh, work that's going to be done here, but also I, I definitely wanted to highlight, uh, that, uh, we received a quote for, a replacement of diffuser, a nose choke cone, a retention plate and a combustion hat on our boiler. And that is something that definitely needs to be done pretty quickly. We're, we're getting some, some soot and some things in our boiler room that shouldn't be there. So that is something that we're going to have to do fairly quickly. Uh, and then the last piece of, of maintenance facilities, uh, because we're not going to be, um, in school every day. The refrigerator quote that we initially received, uh, we're going to hold off on that and, um, uh, because we, we can go without it now. And if, if we're back in school, we would look at purchasing a new refrigerator for $3,900 to $4,000 instead of, instead of the quote of $2,500 to just replace the part. So, uh, once we're back in school, uh, we'll have discussions about that.
Great. So that's 135 students for enrollment.
Yes.
Just tally them up. How does that include people that have also enrolled at other locations or disenrolled? Or are those enrollments, uh, like firm that we know?
So that, those enrollments were as of last Friday.
Okay.
Uh, I'm sorry, are those numbers were of last Friday? We have gotten a couple of, a couple of, of parents that, um, had reached out that said they're not going to be, um, participating in remote learning, but they have not officially unenrolled. So we kept those numbers.
Okay.
As, as, as of today.
Uh, Jen and Melissa, anything on the principal's report? Is the boiler quote going to be able to come out of the traditional budget or are we going to need to do some uh, work on something of, some other place?
So we are, we are going to be taking both the ionization and the boiler as of, as of today. In conversations with Molly, uh, we have the money in our budget right now to, to do both, uh, from our, from our default budget. And if, if things come up later on in the year, we have, we have access to the maintenance trust.
Great.
Yeah. I had advised Brandon is probably smarter to do that since we have cost savings in other areas. And that way the trust is to save for any day when it's absolutely needed.
Great. Thank you. Anything else for Mr. French for the principal's report? Okay. Thank you. Uh, chairs report. We have not had any meetings, uh, from anything other than school board meetings. For any of our committees, I believe. Paul, has policy meeting, has, uh, Melissa has policy met?
No.
Okay. So let's go under number seven, old business. And then when we get to new business, uh, Esther, could you turn the chat back on for anticipation? So old business repurposing of the trust fund update. I believe Molly had some updates on this.
I'm just trying to unmute myself. Um, yeah. So I did reach out to Gordon Graham, who's the attorney. And I'm just going to read the email I have from him. So he does say, under provisions of RSA 3516, the purpose of a capital reserve fund may be changed by a vote of two thirds of the voters present and voting at the annual school district meeting. The language of the warrant article.
I think she's freezing, so I will continue. What, because I think both Melissa and Jen, we went through this before when I had the board about the repurposing of this is a couple of things. So as you know, you can repurpose it through a warrant article. Um, I did talk to Gordon today and, um, what's a little bit different than before was we, our legal counsel, I want to say five or six years ago, said we had to present member two separate warrant articles. One to dissolve and then one to repurpose. Gordon is saying now we can do it in one warrant article. So you can dissolve it and repurpose it with that two thirds vote. Or you can have just a warrant to dissolve it. That would only be a majority vote. Doesn't have to be a super majority. So, um, those are really your two choices. Obviously, if you have, if you do the one that requires the two third vote and it fails, it just, you, the money remains where it is. So that's, that's one of those kinds of, I think, uh, safety net. If you're not sure exactly if you exactly want to dissolve it, dissolve it. So certainly there are many trust funds that could benefit, whether it's special ed or all those, you know, kind of trust funds that the money might be repurposed for, but that's obviously, uh, discussion with Brandon and, and the board to see what might be ideas. But those are the, those are the two options, which are, that first option is a little bit safer than what we had heard about six years ago.
Sorry, I'm back. I froze up a bit.
Yeah. I picked up where you left off, Molly.
Thanks.
Do you want to finish reading his, uh, email? Cause I, I have it up here too. So.
Okay. Um, I'm not sure what the last thing you heard.
Two thirds of voters present and voting in the annual school district meeting.
Okay. Uh, the language of the warrant article, um, to change the purpose of the capital reserve fund can be determined once the new purpose is decided upon. And he would be happy to help us with the language. In the past, we've also created a warrant articles that dissolve the existing capital reserve funds. And allows the funds to accumulate to lapse to surplus and then appropriate those funds that will lapse out of the surplus into a new capital reserve fund that's created all in one article. The language is somewhat complex, um, but he's again, happy to help us with that.
Great. Thank you. Uh, Melissa, you had something?
Yeah, I just had a question. Does, so if we have a, a trust fund and we want to repurpose it, can we repurpose it into multiple trust funds? Either ones that exist currently or other newly created ones? So could it, you know, say we had a hundred thousand, could it be divided into five things, 20,000 each? Is that an option?
It's, sorry, Molly, go ahead.
No, I was going to say, I believe it is. It just have to be how we word it.
Okay.
Is that what you were going to say, Esther?
Yeah. You just want, I would definitely use legal counsel to develop that warrant article. So, um, the Department of Revenue accepts it as written, which is the goal.
Okay. Thank you.
When does the Department of Revenue need the language by? I know it's like early January, but we should probably can get it reviewed ahead of time?
I don't know the exact deadline, but that's sounds about right. Just so it has to be printed.
Yeah, it's all, it's kind of that timeline work backwards from when the vote of in that march and then when the deliberative session and when the, all those kinds of things. So I think if you use January as a timeframe, that's a, a, a good timeframe moving forward. You should have what you need.
And Gordon said he'd be happy to help us craft the language.
Do either Jen or Melissa want to take the lead on this and make sure that we get, make sure that this comes up again in January or by January and, and make sure the language gets resolved?
Yeah, I can do that. Um, I know I have some initial thoughts on it and, and maybe I can, uh, sit down with Brandon and, and kind of discuss what, what I was thinking. And then, um, we can bring it up at the next board meeting.
Okay. And if you guys want to talk or email me as to what you're thinking, we can talk with Gordon and maybe get that language going.
Okay.
Yes, Esther.
So Melissa, I'm just taking notes for Dave. Would you want that on the September 9th agenda or the September 23rd agenda?
Uh, 23rd.
Yeah.
Yeah. This is just.
Just making sure.
A two week turnaround.
I didn't think this would work, but I didn't want to assume that you guys were superhuman.
No, not with the first week of school mixed in there too. I think Brandon, Brandon will have a few things to work on.
Yeah, I, I, yeah. I'm, I thank, thank goodness you said the 23rd of September.
And we can even push it back to the first one in October too. Play about, play that by year. Um, we'll hear from that part. Let's see. So thank you for that. So right now there's no, no, no other need for, so that's a check off of the to do for the trust fund update, uh, that we had, uh, made a motion in one of our earlier meetings to, to look at that. So another old business committee development. So let me jump down to number four, uh, committee assignments for 2021. So we have currently the SAU 16 policy committee. We have the SAU 16 safety committee. We also have a parent advisory committee. And then we also have a locally created, uh, SAU 16 EKS safety me, uh, committee. Does that, does that fill that, the committee assignments that we had? Yes, Esther.
Um, I don't know. Sometimes you do the SAU superintendent's evaluation committee.
Nope.
We have the SAU social, emotional and mental health committee. That board members are welcome to have a rep on. We meet usually once every six weeks. If anyone, just so those are other, two other SAU committees that do have some board reps on them. If you, that's a area of interest.
I'd be happy to do the social emotional, since I'm doing the safety too, if that makes sense. But I don't want to.
Sure. And no one else is jumping. I don't see anyone jumping though. I'll put your name down if you guys think.
So.
Hand in hand. So.
Let's go down with policy SAU 16 district wise. Melissa, you were on that last year. Do you want to continue or?
Sure.
That's a strong yes, not a sure. That's a, I'd be happy to. I'm a lawyer.
You know, well, last year we were wrapping up and we'd done all those changes that came out from the, uh, you know, the election cycle. And we were looking pretty good. And I think this first few months is going to be pretty bad on policy committee. So.
Yeah. So Melissa, we'll do that one. Jen, you were also on the, uh, SAU 16 safety committee. Is that something you wish to continue on?
Yes.
Okay. I don't know if there's going to be a need for the parent advisory committee at this time. So it was a parent partner advisory committee, uh, Mr. French, that as of last year, its sole purpose was to explore the preschool program. That was the, that was the only reason for that committee existing. Uh, but that is an option for you, Mr. French, to continue some sort of committee. Um, the, the construction of the committee is up to you as well. Uh, so last year we had, uh, a board member, community members. We had three or four teachers on that committee. So if there's a need that you have, we have the ability to create a committee. So I think we can table that one for right now and give you a chance to think about that.
Thank you.
So we'll leave a space holder for that one, but, uh, we won't assign anyone. So the SAU 16, uh, so much social emotional learning, uh, Jenny heard a volunteer for that. I'm okay with that. Melissa, you okay with that?
Yep.
Um, and then the board evaluation committee, uh, Melissa, you were on that last year. Uh, do you wish to continue?
If no one else wants it, I'll take it.
Well, why don't you take it?
All right.
There's also a joint board chairs meeting too. Uh, that's one of the committees. So I sit on that one. So we have an op, opportunity now jumping back to old business, community development, local policy committee. And the reason why I want to put this up there this year is because we are now doing different decisions than every other board. In terms of opening the school and how that's going to relate to policies. So I would like to think if we could look at the policies that we currently have on the board, make sure that our return to school does not violate any of those policies or change them and, and review them at board meetings if they, if they are in, in, in contradiction. So that's the only purpose, I think of that committee, uh, is while we're doing some sort of remote learning, to make sure that we are in compliance with our local committee, uh, our local policies. Uh, do you guys have any discussions on that? Yeah, Esther.
Yeah. Um, that's going to be also the first task that I know I've been pulling policies because all of our policies are very similar from district to district. So I, I don't know that there might be some crosswalking that this committee would want to do. So you don't, both, uh, both aren't doing the same work is my point. Cause they'll probably come forth to this board for approval as they normally do.
Right.
Policy committee that Melissa's on.
So Melissa, could you look at our local policies then and just make sure that there's nothing like attendance that, you know, our, our specific policy on attendance doesn't, uh, not, or jives with what we're proposing that the plant, that the remote plan does.
Yep.
Cause there's, there's only a couple of them that deal with, you know, that have these, have language in there that is specific to running the school and opening the school.
Right. And I'm sure, I'm sure Esther and, yeah, and Dr. Ryan, you guys have already started to put those things together. So.
Okay.
Okay.
So would you be able to, to take on our local ones too, just to bring back to the board as part of the, the, if you guys don't meet before, uh, September 9th?
Yeah. And I don't think we are. I don't know. Esther, do you know when?
I don't know when the policy, um, committee's meeting, but I would be very surprised if it was before September 9th.
I would too.
I just, I want to make sure that we open school under, you know what I mean? Under.
Well, I agree, Jamie. I think we're going to have to, it's going to take some time.
Okay.
Cause we're not going to have these policies done in two weeks. It's, that's just not feasible. Uh, you know, I think what we'll tackle the ones that are top tier and, you know, and work with the policy committee and then, and certainly like, you know, we always review them to make sure that they're, you know, they jive with what we're doing locally. So.
Okay. So then we'll scratch off a policy local committee and that'll be handled through, um, the SAU 16. So seven B two communications committee. So this one, um, I propose to have it be something that we can develop a stakeholder communications piece. As part of trying to make sure that our, our goals that we have, that are also part of this discussion down there. A lot of them relate and revolve around communications and making sure that where public and parents and, uh, you know, staff and students look for information is where they've, you know, where we tell them to look for it. And, you know, and make sure, and, you know, we've had some different locations for years, just to standardize something and maybe look at maybe doing a board, uh, a board update. You know, something like that for, for some sort of communications out to the town. Uh, I know the town already has other pages like connects that we wouldn't, I wouldn't expect that we look at creating our own little social, you know, Facebook pay, page or site for SAU 16 East Kingston, but you, how to utilize those in the best way possible. Jen, knowing your strengths as a former communications expert, uh, would you be willing to, uh, look into heading that committee, developing a committee on communications?
Yeah, sure. Who did you, I guess as far as a committee, do you, what were you thinking is like what the makeup would be and?
So I think that the public input is definitely important. And I mean, the same way that the parent advisory committee had a, a mix of everyone. The same way your safety committee has, has a mix of everyone. But I think, you know, we're going to look at this committee as what, what are we missing? So who are we hearing, who are we not hearing from? And who are the stakeholders that, you know, aren't involved in, in normal, normal board meetings and normal, um, school functions and really relate to being a, a town school. A center school. So I think the makeup would be up to you, but I would, I would suggest giving, um, you know, making some spots available for parents, for community, for community members, uh, for some potential teacher, staff, uh, openings. And maybe even thinking about a fifth grade student, um, for some of the, the leadership opportunities there as well. So I think that the creation would be up to you. Um, but that's just my suggestions there.
Yeah, I'd be happy to do that.
Excellent. Uh, so do we need a formal motion to create a communications committee? Since it's a board committee?
Uh, since it is a board committee, I would recommend you do make a motion.
Okay. Should I? Okay. I'll make a motion to establish a communications committee for the 2021 fiscal year.
A second.
Okay. Any other discussion? Okay, any other discussion? Okay, all in favor? Jamie?
Melissa.
Jen.
Okay, and then one more new committee meeting and then we'll, we'll make sure we wrap up the, all the assignments and put those all into a motion there too. Communication Engagement Committee. Sorry, Community Engagement Committee. I'm reading two lines at once. So my thoughts about this one is goes hand in hand almost with the Communications Committee. The Communications Committee is a tool on how to do what we want to do with the community engagement. So making sure that we invite the public to things that are are publicable, are open to the public, making sure that we thank people for their support throughout the year. I know the PTO puts on many activities that, that they try and invite as many people as possible. But if there's some way that we can help get people involved in the process of thinking about all these types of events. Or even you know, what is, what are we missing from the budget season in terms of when people vote, what information and what thought do they think they had beforehand? And involving stakeholders in that process would be part of thinking how, how we can, how can we use the community to our advantage throughout the processes, processes? So getting people talking about the questions before they actually see the plan or to see the budget for the first time, to get their feedback throughout. I think that's an important part of the stakeholder engagement that we as a board should start looking at as a as a concentrated effort. I know we tried and do it and this isn't just one of the checkbox. Yes, we included parents. Yes, we included this. This is a integrated activity of including community in our decisions. And I know it might be difficult at first with having to be remote or limited engagement, but I think having people start thinking about it would be part of a, of a plan. Do either of you, Melissa, Jen, have anything on that?
No, I think you, I think you covered kind of those thoughts we had had last year on this one. Can't think of anything to add.
Mr. French, would you, I know this would tie into some of your goals as well. Would you like to be a part of this committee as well?
Yes.
That's stronger than a sure, Melissa. Just saying.
That, that fits perfectly into you know, my, my first 100 day plan, but my, my whole year plan. And Dr. Ryan and I have had you know, discussions about this exact thing. So yes, please, please include me in that.
Would it make sense for maybe one of us to be on that committee but have, like, you know what I'm, is that where you saw Esther raising her hand, but it seems like some crossover too with PTO and I don't want to you know, we can help. I don't know. What were your thoughts, Esther? I saw you raising your hand.
I just was quickly looking at the policies for the board. And so I would just recommend the language that you use in a motion would be an advisory committee to the board. Because if you make it a board committee, then you would have to have minutes and postings. If you make it an advisory committee, then the advisory committee can come back and present to the board on the topic.
So this is very similar to the way the, the Partner Parent Advisory Committee was. So I'll make a motion to have a Community Engagement Advisory Committee established starting the 2021 fiscal year. Do you have a second?
A second, sorry. Writing it down.
Okay, any other discussion? I'd like to be a part of that committee, but I don't want to chair it. So I think the same way that the Parent Advisory Committee was run by the principal and had, you know, the board was part of it, but it wasn't the board's committee. I'd like to offer that as a structure.
Can you, can you talk more about what, what that would look like as far as would it be me facilitating that group? Is that what you were saying?
So in, in the past, so the Parent Advisory Committee works that the principal would call the meeting on the topic of whatever discussion it was. And for the last two years, it's been preschool. But the principal would be charged with bringing in experts who would, who would be part of that discussion. But putting out an invite to people who would be interested and then constructing the composition of that committee would be on you, up to you, not on you, up to you. To include like parents and again, maybe even a student leader. And teachers, of course, teachers and staff. But then your, your role is to facilitate and to make sure that all the, you know, just as you would a, a staff meeting, make sure that the meetings, the minutes are there or whatever for yourself and just to almost be the administrator of that meeting.
Okay.
Not to add more onto your plate. But I think it aligns with your goals and I think it aligns with our board goals. So the support is always there from us as well.
Sounds good.
So any other discussion on that motion? So the motion was to create a Community Engagement Advisory Committee. And it was seconded by Melissa. All in favor? Jamie?
Melissa.
Jen.
Great.
So can I clear, so with the Communications Committee, did we say, is that an official committee where we're doing minutes and postings or is that an advisory committee as well?
Advisory.
Yeah.
So I will make, I will make a motion to revise the motion. Can I do that? Is that?
Can, you would, you would withdraw your initial motion and make a new one?
So I withdraw my motion to create a Communications Committee. Who seconded that one originally? Do you withdraw your second as well?
I do.
Okay, so that motion is off the table. So I make a new motion to establish a Communications Advisory Committee for the 2021 fiscal year.
A second.
Okay, any other discussion on this motion? Thank you, Jenny and Esther for bringing up the advisory word. All in favor? Jamie?
Melissa.
Jen.
Awesome. So last thing under old business, we had talked about.
Jamie, can I just jump in real quick?
Yep.
I just wanted to have one more quick discussion on committee. I know I feel like this is enough committees, but I, I just wanted to bring it up with Brandon and just see if he had any interest in in having a local committee for the back to school discussions. I, I don't know if it would be helpful to have, you know, a board member and parents and, you know, involved in that kind of discussion with teachers and, and yourself as we head towards October. Because I, I know every school is going to look different in that discussion and so I just wasn't sure if that would be helpful to you. If it would be something you're interested in, if we could, I was just thinking it may be a way that we can kind of channel all of the, you know, feedback that the board's getting and that you're getting and putting it kind of in one place to review, discuss and, you know, and to provide input back to the board.
Yeah, I, I think as we, as we talked about, kind of reassessing as we got to October, I, I I think having one landing spot for for feedback from our staff and from our parents and from our students is, is going to be really important. How that would look, it definitely, it's definitely worth a conversation on how we want to make that work for us and and which, which stakeholders would be participating. And so I, I, I think it's definitely something we need to look at, but I would love to, to talk further about it either tonight or next, I, I, I don't know. What do you guys think? It's, it's something that.
If you want some time to think about it. I think before, before our next meeting on the ninth, if we could bring it up then. But if you do feel like you need some help and some support before that date. This is, is this also Melissa for like the reevaluation of the plan and how it's going and the feedback process and the feedback loops that we had talked about? Is that what your intent was as well?
Yeah. Yeah, just to kind, just to serve as kind of that, that middle ground so that it's really difficult with the board meetings to kind of get that information out or to have those real discussions about, you know, creative solutions or, you know, things you're thinking about. And, you know, I know we don't, we can't get all that information in a board meeting. So I wasn't sure if having a separate advisory committee would be helpful.
Melissa, would you like to, would you like to make that part of our agenda when we discuss the was it the trust that we wanted to, to look at? Is that what you wanted to? Yeah, let's, let's plan on that of talking about both.
Okay.
So we'll move that to the September 9th meeting for a presentation or a, a motion at that time.
Sounds good.
Actually, before we move on from committees, there's also a new SAU 16 Budget Advisory Committee that I am also on as this year. This is to help the SAU 16 before we get to the budget vote in October, November from the Joint Board. And then also to help educate those members for when that question does come up at our local levels. You know, why are we being charged this amount of money for this amount? So we'll be able to have better answers on that. And Molly is sharing that. Yes, Esther?
My only other question is do, does East Kingston have a Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee? Or is, I don't know what the conversation's been around that. I know our other schools are working towards either starting those or continuing those. And I just wanted to ask the question while you were talking about committees. So I.
Yeah, so I, I just, I just emailed Dr. Ryan a few days ago. Ms. Tool, our school counselor, will be facilitating and guiding our staff through that. So I'm not sure how the other schools committees are, are formed, if, if it's just staff members and, and, and parents and community members. I.
I mean, I can speak to Exeter's that's been probably exist, in existence, the longest at the elementary school. And they, I think, started the way you did and then kind of expanded to invite board members and community members. So it sounds like you're starting it and getting some education, et cetera, and then work to expand, which is great. I just think it's important that it's in the minutes, that it's in the works for East Kingston and that you're considering that. So great, great job. Thanks.
Could we get a report October about where you think that committee might lead? It gives you enough time to think with Ms. Tool? Potentially, or?
We are the discussions were really around who would begin leading us in, in the, the learning for our staff. And we had a quick discussion with with, with Adam Rubin from Tour Evolutions and, and one of his colleagues who led, who led a quick presentation last week on how that could look in our building. And the discussion really started with for me, who, who would be best to lead us in that. And I have a meeting with Adam on, on Friday morning to, to discuss that and other things, but that's going to be part of our discussion.
Great. So the, the committee representations, I just want to put them out there. The policy committee is Melissa. The safety district is Jen. The safety local is also Jen. There is no parent advisory committee at this time. The social emotional meeting for the SAU is Jen. The board, what is that? Board Chairs Meeting? That's mine. The Budget Advisory Committee, that's me. And then we're going to look at potentially a Diversity and Inclusive Excellence Committee. We are, we created a Communications Advisory Committee, staffed by Jen, and a Communications and Gate, Community Engagement Advisory Committee that I'm sitting on, but I'm not sharing. Did I, did I capture everything? Okay, perfect. So now the last thing under old business. The goals from 2021. So way back three weeks ago, or no, no, sorry, a month ago, in the beginning of, of July 9th, we had established and I had proposed three new working, working goals. So the intent of these goals, we're going to be putting them, once they're finalized and approved, onto every one of our agendas underneath listing our goals for the year. So here, here's what we had come up with. I don't think they were finalized, they were just proposed and we're going to think about maybe beefing, beefing them up in terms of making them smart and achievable and measurable goals. So the first goal that we had from 79 was to maintain collaborative relationships with staff, administration and community to establish a transparent communication structure to inform and engage internal and external stakeholders. So that, that was our first goal. Let me jump down to the next goals as we presented. Goal number two was to allocate budget resources to improve student learning while practicing a transparent and fiscally responsible budgeting process. And our goal number three was to support the faculty and staff to ensure that all are welcomed, have the resources they need, and we as a board are there to support their growth in the school. So we had those three goals. I had started to put a couple objectives under each one of them. So I don't know if we have brain power to think of that, about those now. If not, we can push the objectives to another meeting. But I think we should finalize the board goals. And I think then we can start maybe working on objectives. So I know Melissa wasn't at that meeting, but she did have some way in communication prior to the, to the meeting, which we read in the, in the board meeting. Do you guys have anything at this time about the three goals for the 2021 year? Okay, so what I, so I'll make a motion to approve those three board goals. Sorry, there's a ball game in the backyard. Those three board goals that I just read, which were first introduced on 79, 2020. As, as read, how is that? So this is my motion. For the board, board goals is read.
A second.
Second by Jen. Any other discussion right now? So for homework for the board members, I would like to take a look at each one of these and, and start adding in some measurable outcomes. So for instance, for collaborative relationships with staff, to establish a communication structure was part of the goal. Did we establish that communication structure? You know, so that's something there, you know, a measurable goal by the end of June 2021, have we done this? And so that those, you know, we can start thinking about those and maybe think about the goals for September 9th meeting. Yes, Esther?
Jamie, do you mind sending those to Dave so he can get them on the agendas, Dave and Kayla Moore? And tell him you want those as you presented on all the agendas?
Yep, he, he, yes. I'm actually on his, he shared a document with us. So he has them and I'll just make sure that they go on our agendas when Kayla does ask for input again.
Awesome, thanks.
So the motion was to approve those three board goals as read. And it was seconded. Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor? Jamie?
Melissa. I saw her mouth move.
I did too. She unmuted. Did you unmute?
I didn't. Jen, sorry.
Okay.
I was worried my dog was going to start barking too. When he hears your dogs barking.
It was so nice in May when there was no one in the backfield. So at this point, Esther, could you turn the chat back on? Thank you. So just, you know, just to follow up for our next meeting board, I'd like to just look at the goals and to have some actionable items for each one of those goals. And that goes for anyone who has any public input as well for any of those goals. There, there should be shared goals and I want to make sure. There, there should be shared goals and I want to make sure, we, we do have a lot of visions for engagement, but I want to make sure that those, who we do have visions for engagement with are heard as well. So if you have any comments on those board goals, please do email a board member or email all three and that becomes public comment. Any new business board members?
No.
Any new business from SAU 16 admin?
No.
Mr. French, anything from the EKS?
No.
Okay, I, I don't see any other public input coming up in the chat. So are there any other needs to go into non-public? Okay. So then I just want to remind the public that we are, our next meeting is September 9th, followed by the 23rd. And those are listed at the bottom of the agenda there. I'm sure there's going to be another board, joint board meeting sometime, but those will be listed on a different place and not on our board, board agendas. So I will make a motion to adjourn the meeting at 6:41 with no other chats. Do you have a second?
Sure, I'll second.
Another sure? Thank you. Great. Thank you, everyone, for attending and thank you, Esther, for filling in.
Thanks, Esther. Good to see you.
Thank you, Esther.
Good to see you all.
Have a good night, everyone.